Okay, welcome everyone. So we're going to get started at six thirty. This is a rural mean, the councilor of the city of Hollister, August eighteenth. The meeting started today at three. Can we have a roll?
Vice Mayor.
President.
Councilor Senda.
Here.
Councilmember Morales.
Here.
Councilwoman Deanda.
Here.
And Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, now, Councilwoman Deanna, she can lead us in the poll.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the free public office of citizens and to the citizens who live here.
Okay, thank you, that. City attorney, do we have anything to report on both sessions?
Yes, from last meeting, there was motion, Mayor Stevens, second. By Councilmember Morales, city council voted four oh to join in the fall litigation under due Sackler National Opioid Treatment to the option amniotic sick man, Divor Miles, Zida National Opioid settlement. That's it.
Okay, thank you for that report. Okay, so we're going to input. This is the time of meeting where we cannot be... Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, I just have going to special of the day. Sorry about that. Thank you, Councilwoman Senna. Fourth of February leadership initiative for twenty twenty five program. Yes, sorry about that, thank you.
Good evening, students and members of the council. My name is Dr. Kathleen Rose and I'm proud to have your ministers' data outcomes from year one of SBLI. I'm presenting myself, I'm in capital, co-siliters of program, and supported by members of our court who recognizes our lovely reenagelers, as well as Brenda Thely, who's our program manager. I have access to my slides. Thank you. I'm assuming I can forward them.
Go ahead.
Okay, SLI was developed over a year period with a small group dedicated leaders and review of development programs across the tree with oversight of the committee fashion of city attorney. The vision for our program was central with every strategic activity that was incorporated into the institute. Our vision was to vision city attorney thriving with first credit and educated leaders. I'm today to give some data and some come data about class after the conclusion of our first year. Our first cohort was diverse, many served in a main leadership role in the committee. All members of cohort came motivated to do more in the committee, develop leadership skills, and give back specifically this committee. We signed the cohort to a finite group, we had twenty-five in our first cohort, we had five affinity groups, created opportunity for deeper connection and to explore interpersonal leader of trade and values with application real world leadership challenges. This slide illustrates the leadership environment that represented in our first cohort. Programs on focused on build leadership capacity and identifying personal strengths aligned with complex leadership decision game seizures. Thank you. I'll begin with lifting ranks fire and a statement that all members of our court did prior to meeting in the very first session. And focused on build attributes individually denied activities we incorporated throughout the year. All members were required also to observe, analyze a pub meeting, board or advisory, as well as participate in equity challenge throughout the year. Each program day had member of community who came and provided leadership, let's see, new time, speech about their own personal lead up journey. Pass word formed, highlight on profit groups, government relations more, we had in each of our programs. Each month, a planned team assess program and need modifications appropriate as we were the year. We've been in case studies, real old scenarios, so as a full day at France retreat, where we did a simulated society day long event, each court member to run the funnier of the society, it was highly impactful. One of the central elements of SBLI in the beginning will develop original Suica community to show us in the future, here in Ambonito County, so group, you ready to do that? Right. Okay. As planned for Court Two, begins on September nineteenth, we will continue to work community partners and sponsors to ensure that we are being the best leadership content and experience this year. Now, this community will continue to benefit. Court Two is full, we have twenty-five persons in Court Two, and they've completed the end process for SBLI. Our community partners' bonds have been in our again this year. Moving into the twenty-five to six year, Corinna met individual with the court participants last week, and we've individual interviewed with all of them. Very excited about diversity of this group, and we look forward to September. We appreciate the support we've received from city council, your help to launch this program. So, and issue all of our sponsors in the committee, thank you so much for supporting SBLI and community leadership. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Good with the cohort, I'm, yeah, forward to meeting all of you in leadership, especially with city, that was awesome. So, thanks for that. Okay, so now we're going to move to the public introduction.
May I have one surf item that was half?
I'm sorry.
No, it's Richard Way.
My name is Richard Way, some of you may be on the Sanino Commission mission, and a bit of a hog in my throat. Anyway, I was a member of the cohort that just completed, and I just want to echo Dr. Rissett. It was valuable, even for a seasoned professional like myself, in particular the comfort resolution and the mitigating change asks of it. So, I really appreciate the commitment you guys were able to make to leadership institute. Elmont's tight at the moment, if you happen to have windfall something in the future, please cross mind, much appreciated, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Mayor, what's out there?
Yes, go ahead.
I just want to thank you very much and the participants, thank you for investment in our community members, our current leaders that are teaming the ones not only for our count but for single rent that's here. And these are the people that are going to be here in three, five years, so thank you for that commitment, and also building strong partnership relationships because they last all time, so thank you very much.
Thank you for that. Yeah, the members of council, anything? Mayor, go ahead.
Just out there are members of community that want to grow as leaders, I see some that I've worked with so far on this good DU, and that there are leaders in the community that are willing to stay together, and it's just heartening to see all, I don't wait to what happens with movement board in the future, and with the neck over, is it to do? Proud of you, keep it up.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other comments? Okay, this, I think that's, and we're going to move, I apologize, so, I'll just, I'll just like bold just create here. I have a list of things, make sure I cover, and public comment on this item, we're not down on, so I apologize for that. But this time, we are going in, right? Again, okay, now we are going in to public question, this is time for any, to speak on any item that is not on the agenda. So, to ensure that you've got a speaker card, and you know, to our city, come to the podium, use your name and your city for record, and see the council, you're on Zoom, just raise your hand on Zoom, and you're on your own on Zoom, just spread a star nine. We will have a maximum of three minutes per item, and, uh, three minutes per project. So, if this just, I just let everyone know that in the, right now, that you have a speaker for any item that's on the agenda. I'm going to ask you to bring up as soon as you can, so that we can send how many people are going to, if it's an item, the sooner you get it to our city. Okay, so do we have any speaker cards for sections, city clerk?
Or would you not need speaks for this section of agenda?
Okay, great, thank you. So, we're going on to consent items on agenda, so any members of the council have? Councilmember, go ahead.
There's some point one one question, it's going to, one study's created, it's going to back to council.
So, what happened is, is with this, this is the MOU of how work to go and share the costs with an approval tonight. We had many no key vote on it at last meeting on the San Juan, but still we can add it tomorrow, and it'll go cog on Thursday for an approval. If approved, then AUG will issue NFP and award select a qualified applicant that come through, and whatever that dollar, which we're estimating being one hundred, two hundred thousand staff work, that will come back for an appropriation. We able to put that out of traffic fees. And then the study would come back as well.
Any else, councilman? No? Any other, any questions on any other item?
I just have a comment on seven point six, seven point seven, seven point eight. When I was read through these, I was like, man, more growth, um, you know, growth down, just so we can catch up on infrastructure, whether it be above ground or below ground, uh, that's the main thing. So, when say you get people out of town, get people stick back into town.
Mayor, I suggest it's going to be a discussion about that, you hold those and vote on them. Did you have a fair? You're good with what comment, if it's going to be longer, then we should hold it in separate eyes.
It was, these were conditionally approved a year ago, and they're really going to help, well, fifteen hundred, twenty-five hundred, uh, fifteen, twenty-five dollars per house, one forty-six times over is paid for a lot of police and property and for our schools, so, uh, approved long ago, looks like, no, then that's going to be good for our police fire schools.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, any questions or comments? Okay, so move on, we have any public comments on the consent agenda?
We have public comments for any consent and I.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so let's, and I'm going to get back with the council, can I get a move from council on this agenda?
Um, to the consent agenda, I present a staff, Steve, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Sroko, please.
Vice Speaker.
Hi.
Councilmember Rissett.
Hi.
Councilmember Morales.
Yes.
Councilwoman Deanda.
Yes.
And Mayor Sis.
Yes.
Motion pending.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, so we're going to move on to county business, eight point one, presenting the community workforce agreement between the city of Hollister and the San Clara and San Bido County, a support on this, thank you.
Well, she brings up the presentation, our public works directly, and I will give the presentation.
And just a reminder, if you're going to speak on items, make sure you get your speaker card, you are the clerk.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. This is a, that was rested by council giving back more information. So, we put together the presentation, it covers basics of it, and has some information outside projects that we've cleared with project laboring. Community work for green. So, community work for green is a pre-active bargaining agreement with one more labor union that establishes terms and conditions of employment for a specific construction project. CWA must be single agreement, cover all organizations, representative building and construction employees involved in the project, and all contractors and subcontractors working a project. A CWA is a type project labor agreement that includes community oriented commitments related to equitable workforce development, social justice, small business support, and other issues. On August third, twenty twenty-three, the council gives direction to consensus draft ordinance requiring the use of CWA for public construction projects valued at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars more. December fourth, twenty twenty-three, the council adopts ordinance twelve forty-one, requiring use of CWA for public construction projects valued at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or more. Uh, it's twelve forty-one, and it's second three point zero six, purchasing of type three, renew and finance of the Hollister code. Acquire LA and CWA for public works projects valued at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or more. Added section three zero six point two nine zero, which formalized the California Uniform Pub Construction Cost Accounting or CUPA Act, which was adopted by city council on fifth, two twenty-three via resolution twenty-three dash two one one. Uh, updated the purchase limits of city major apartment heads in alignment with other surrounding cities and cases. Other clarifying and or administrative changes. December fourth, twenty twenty-three, city council adopts resolution twenty twenty-three dash two four eight, authorizing city to enter into a community workforce agreement with the San Clara and San Bido County Building and Construction Trac Council. Agreement term is for three years, being on January sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. Fear over provision parties not meet to discuss changes per expiration of first year term. Provisions of a community force agreement are work stoppage, strike sympathy, strikes lockouts. Uh, the city of Hollister Union Contractors, governed by CWA, read that there will no strikes, these strikes work stoppage, picking, handbilling, or otherwise because of this related to the project. This provision ensures that work on city projects continues uninterrupted. Section also describes the arbitrage process to be used to resolve disputes. Uh, job conferences, this provision requires the project manager to convene and conduct pre-op conference to unions and contractor representatives to ensure that terms of community workforce agreement are filled throughout life of the project. Union security and referral, this provision requires all contractors to recognize unions as sole bargaining representative of cracked employees governed by the CWA, requires contractors forming and work on the project, utilize union restraint facilities and referral system to fill craft job requirements. More key visions are wages benefits, this provision requires contractors to pay contributions to vacation, pension, and other for compensation plans, apprenticeship, worker protection, and assistance health benefit funds established by applicable master agreements for each hour worked on project. Apprentice and helmets, hard hats, these provisions require contractors to employ apprentice from California State approved joint apprentice, apprentice training programs, and utilize the services of Center for Military Recruitment, Assisted the Vets Employment Helmets to Hats Program. Grains arbitration procedure provision outlines the process to resolve dispute between the contractor and union related interpretation of community workforce agreement. Uh, here's some information about apprenticeships, according to data obtained from the Benin and Construction Trac Council, BC, there were nine low residents employed on recently completed twenty twenty-first citywide roadway improvement project, various contractors and subcontractors. There were no SIFs on gender, apprentice status, or previous material provided. And according to a state conducted by smart, these starts prevail.org, there were more than sixty-seven thousand students training and apprenticeships in twenty twenty. And according to data obtained from TC, there are three other nearby cities, not all necessarily similar to Hollister, that have PLAs and recalcies. Uh, this is one of the items that also wanted, uh, comparison, so San Jose is not exactly comparable to Hollister, but they have a PL with a threshold of one million dollars plus the CP increases. Uh, Watson has a threshold of center thousand dollars, um, Mountain View has a threshold, and all recalcies have a threshold of two million dollars. These are some of the recent projects that have been constructed or in construction using community workforce agreement. Uh, twenty-four citywide roadway improvements, it's the big dick that we just completed a couple months ago. Uh, there's only one bid, a job complete, engineers estimate eight to five million, uh, the bid amount was eight two seven eight, and some changes, just a little bit under the engineers estimate. And then the construction costs including contingency was nine point eight million dollars. Some of the, most of that is from, or all of it is changers, so we had issues underneath Marais Street, there were some concrete underneath asphalt that we weren't aware of, that caused little X to go through the concrete, put a storm line that was there. Uh, with some tree removals, um, were associated with some letting of a curb and or sidewalk, uh, and some conflict with drive approach or EA ramp. Um, and then there was, so that would map out better what was being called on the plans. Then we'd extend a small portion of pavement that wasn't, was between a grind overlay and a survey seal, it was a small piece, uh, wasn't caught in the plans, but kind of odd, an older piece, so we did a little dig there to repair, uh, uh, a large pothole, and then dove that, so it all kind of matched up, that right on Fourth Street. Then section grind overlay.
William, I made a jump just real quick, so one thing to point out is you'll see bid amount and the actual cost contingencies, so you approve your road projects, also include a contingency amount, so although you see that, it's the nine eight was when the authority and contract assigned, we technically didn't go over the authorities, you want to point out.
And we that, build that in essentially, um, well, we did in on almost every project, uh, the more underground work that we do, the larger we make the contingency, because you're digging it on, you're not sure exactly which will find there, um, so, the more comps the project, uh, you leave larger percentage of tangency. Uh, there's still one kind of overlay, uh, we had bids, engineers seven and four thousand, the winning amount was four hundred and forty-five thousand, uh, not quite, a little over half of the engineers estimate, uh, and the final amount was five hundred and eleven thousand, it was a change order in that. Another section that wasn't identified in the plans, um, a colist that I believe there was one piece, just include that, since we were within what we did, um, said it was another seamless transition, uh, it's like on Fourth Street. The gate roundabout, um, two bids total, uh, it's under construction, engineers estimate was four point five million, uh, the amount was three point four million, and, uh, since we're seeing construction there, we don't have a file, there, there was one other large change order to that that showed up, uh, once done, to replace some storm manholes that weren't identified in plan, and once started construction there, and fairly shaped really old manholes, the one that we had replaced right in the middle grab last, last year, two years ago. Found some of those, we replaced those instead of having to go back and dig them up, so we just tear those, we were already in there. Um, then IBT bridge road outfall, uh, tid, it's mainly under construction, uh, engineers estimate seven point five million, uh, bid amount was eight point four million, um, it's under construction, no major change orders of yet, had a couple of smaller change orders, but it's going to be smooth, and that's, um, scheduled to be completed in about January, I think maybe December will have final run it. And then we have projects here, we're completed before, had this CWA and LA, and I'm not knowledgeable about these, because most of these have before employed here, or at least for our industry of engineering. Um, Fremont way were eight bids, uh, job completed, the engineer estimate was five six four thousand, bid amount four oh nine, and then the construction cost with contingencies and change orders was, uh, six line, there were two bids, uh, that one's done, the engineers estimate one hundred and eight thousand, the bid amount was one seventy-six, and then contingencies was one eighty-one thousand, and if I remember correctly, so those change orders were tree removal. Um, Hillcrest Road sewer improvements, some bids, uh, completed, one point one million was the estimate, uh, just under one point one million is a bid amount, one million eight thousand, and the construction cost contingencies was one point two million. And for that, there was a, a one changer that I recall was a conflict, and this was a groundwork, so you used to get in those conflicts, um, a conflict between sewer storming, that was the biggest change order for that. And South Street improvements, there are four bids, uh, the estimate was one point four million, the bid was two point three million, and then contingencies were two point, uh, contingencies were two point six, um, there was a ground word involved there, so there's some conflicts between certain storm, and some, I think a couple of extra removal, they're comped with the Abrams. Uh, and recommendation to review their presentation and provide possible directions to staff, and I'm here, any questions I have?
Okay, thank you for that report, appreciate the information, I'll check, um, council, any questions, men? Questions on the night? Okay, so this one, um, okay, go ahead, go ahead, Councilwoman Senda.
Thank you for your presentation. Um, I think it might be helpful to see a side-side comparison, I let you bring down my project, so assuming that obviously on the table, all of these projects were created or disagreed.
Uh, these were before the W, the LA, these, these, these were on the slide.
The other ones are that?
With the LA.
Okay, so, again, if we could just get a side-side comparison of what the actual construction cost was, um, as far as like a total of it, and I'm saying, gather more data, so what I'm saying is, all the projects have been pleaded under this segment, I'd like to see what the actual construction cost was in total. Um, was it under, did it above, or right, I think that would be helpful information.
That's, those are the projects.
Is that the total?
Yeah, so the, the first two are complete, um, so the engineers, we can ask, so this one, it gets a cost budget purpose and things that. Next number is, uh, the winning bid was, and on this one, there was one bid, uh, so that's like tied in line with the, with the engineer's estimate, um, and the funnel cost, um, is the last number there, nine point eight million for the first one, and that is, that's with changers with shoes they ran into, they add cost to the project, they're called it in.
So, what I'm asking is more data, it seems like we don't have a lot of data, it's barely off the contract, correct?
Great, very few projects, correct.
Great, thank you. And then how many more do you have roughly, until, let's say, the end of contract, is that a year and a half?
Uh, about a year and a half.
And roughly, would you say how many more projects, and we have numbers of projects?
We have, the community center restaurants is, they just finished up with the, uh, pre-labor conference, laying out the paper for the contractors with the labor council, um, that should be starting construction in a week two, I would assume. That's one that's out there now, um, we have a couple projects, I would maybe three to five in this year and a half.
And are those sort of projects?
Uh, some, some of them are streets, um, some of them are, we've got sewer line project that is designed now, um, that might start construction before this, before this agreement up. Off the top of my head, we have, we have CIP and the fear plant, I pulled project what's actual, uh, we have fund for, off the top of my head, I can't remember all of what are.
Yeah, because we're also bringing in as next year's budget, well, projects considering the ones approved through this year, so, um, like the first two, though, have been pleaded relative recently, you're still, um, and the other ones are, hmm, maybe start just a few seconds ago, so, um, it's early to tell.
The thing that I'm getting, it's a little premature to tell if they're worth the saves if, if any, so, again, I hear from public, obviously, but I'm inclined to say that, like, see more data, and I'd like to can you with agreement, so that can reassess when we have more data, that makes sense?
It does.
All right, go.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Senda, other questions or comments? Okay, also, listen to comment, do we have any speaker cards?
Yes, Mr. Savi currently eight speaker cards.
Okay, so, uh, to members of the audience, we do have a lot of speakers, I'm going to move forward, I'm going to remove you guys forward a little bit quickly, uh, so, it looks we don't have a lot on our, I think, think I'm getting any interviews, that's a little bit, because we have to put that thirty minute period, it's going to reduce it to minutes, speaker. Uh, so, I appreciate for the you who land, uh, uh, your comments, I have time, if you can, find a two, shorten it a little bit, so it's with the two minutes, and I apologize having to do that, but we, but we're about to be ended. Okay, so let's hit with our first speaker, thank you.
Okay, and I'm, I'll call out the name, and I'll call up and follow them, and I will apologize, uh, reading and writing, and I'll pronounce you if I'm any of them, so, some of you handwriting like own. Um, our first girl is Glenn, to follow up David Perez.
Mayor Stevens, councilors, thank you for having me here, allowing me to speak on behalf of this community workforce agreement. My name is Chris Klon, been a president of Hollister for past seven years, living in Santa Ranu community. I'm a combat veteran and disabled veteran, and today I serve as an instructor of sheet metal workers, the one and four, four. I primarily charge at Santos and Castro facilities, but occasionally have to travel to Livermore or Fairfield to, uh, work apprentice there. I did this trade, uh, through the apprentice program back in twenty fifteen, which gave me the skills and ability to provide my family. The same program allowed me to train extension of field workers, love Hollister, the atmosphere, the people, speaking that community I'm a part of, um, D. Root and his agricultural background, that makes this city absolutely unique. My family and I are very proud of Hollister. Many residents, I've had community of Hollister work, to spend hours on the road to San Jose, San Francisco, Owen, uh, and further just to living, that's tied away from Emily, checks outside our community. A community workforce agreement changes that, helps keep jobs here, supporting Hollister families, strengthening attack base, and fleeing low businesses. A CWA about face opportunity, creating even play field where union and union contractor compete under the same standard, nobody exclude, nobody get unfair panic, every contractor fans to win work, every skilled worker has a chance to build up our team. The CWA also opens the door for veterans like self, through probes like Hester Harats, it provides natural guard service, and additional service measures, a direct pathway to the trees, means men and men who serve this country can come, build a care, and support their family right here in Hollister.
Thank you, Nicole, I appreciate your comments.
Next, you, Mia?
Hello, Mayor, Councilwoman, I just wanted to thank you for the agreement, my name is Vic Perez, I've been a apprentice for one year, I've been in the base for about four, so I just want to thank the agreement, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Res.
Our next speaker is Sarah Mia, to follow by Rubidol.
Hello, everyone, I'm a journeyman, a local one of her, and on behalf of my brothers, my sisters, and families, we thank you for the CWA that help family and the community.
Thank you, Ms. Mia. Next, girl?
Next speaker is Rubidol, to follow up Steve Belong.
Hello, American members, my name is Rubidol, I'm a former apprentice, a local, and this agreement is up to this committee, keep.
Thank you, Mr. Don.
The next speaker, Steve Belong, to be followed by Alberto Tama.
Good evening, councilman, mayor, I just want to thank you for getting the W in place, this gives opportunity for Hollister residents, uh, build where they live, we take a lot pride in what we do, and so we can show our families what we do, uh, had to commute regardless of Fifth or to Marais or San Francisco, but CWA that gives people the opportunity to work where they live, um, just add that, just see that in place, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, speaker.
The next speaker is Alberto Tama, to be followed by George Neto. The next speaker is Alberto Tama, to be followed by George Neto.
Muy buenas tardes. A mi nombre Alberto Tama gracias. Consigo que me oportuné de representar a la unión más grande de Estados Unidos, Low Three, Engineers. Hablar un pito, un poquito tiempo. Yo vi una ciudad de infi lo representó una comunidad chica igual como de Hollister. Que es nosotros Unidos, una comunidad chica. Empecé en la Unión en el dos mil sin tuve que dejar la Sanse, San Sis o por cierto años. A dieciocho años sin esta arca de niños de mi millón. Es primera generación en construcción. Y tres años presentó a la Unión Grande de Estados Unidos, crea oportunidades, traen a miles juntas, unidos. Yo represento la comunidad, no es nomás la extracción. Estamos hablando extracción, estamos hablando de unidos juntos. Y es parte de la comunidad que se quedó dinero aquí con la comunidad para trabajo, para, para que sabes que hay jóvenes que no tienen estudio, ir al Ejido. Pero las uniones tiene oportunidades de dar buenero desparte de la Unión. Y que yo represento este muchas alcilio está dando la oportunidad de tener trabajo. Y como le decimos, la Unión la fuera. Gracias.
Gracias, Alberto Tama.
The next speaker, George Neto, to be followed by Tercia.
Good evening, Councilman Mayor. Appreciate you meeting up today. If I don't stand here as a resident of Hollister, I stand on behalf of the members of the Union, Office of Engineers of Three. I would like to show in great what we had. One thing's missing, that is numbers reflective of pensions and future contributions for families who live in the area. To provide for themselves, future generations to come. Their money will stay here, their retirement will stay here. That builds a good community workforce. We can send out our skilled train workers to complete jobs on time, under budget, with the full job. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Neto.
Next speaker, Tony Cia, to be followed by Jacob Monto.
Councilmembers, thank you for your time. Tercia, business agent, local T, twenty-three plus number generation. The CDA, PLAs, Armors, Lea, Pridham, gives them an opportunity to work in their neighbor backyard, you know, build everyone's and be proud of what we've done. You can talk to their kids about it. Also, what meant a lot to me is know the golf work can get at a deep time, spend time with what kids after school, whether cheerleading, games, you got a huge football sound. And that's huge of being allowed a good living age and spend time with your family members. And we appreciate if you move forward, continue with CW.
Thank you, Mr. Cia. Speaker.
The next speaker is Jacob Lamont, followed by Niels Ash.
Evening, Mayor. I'm Jacob Lamont. I'm Hollister, right in Born and Used, graduate, you know, high and I guess now Hollister High, so it's a little weird in that. I'm proud of this. I threw in a ship for his trip. And because of that, I mean, before to live here, I have a wife, so we own a house here. It's nothing I thought would have been cool on first look at work field. The other here with a member, it's received. It's the I C Hollister and it's building. I wanted the same force here to promote a safe work environment and a living that can all appreciate. You know, when I drive here, I want to say we were part of that built, you know, tall as a small mountain. You know, as members, you can say we built this to go some further. So I, I succeed, and I hope you got to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lamont. Next speaker.
The next speaker, Niels Ash, to be followed by Jose Luis Vera.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, members of the community. My name is Niels Ash. I'm the representative with Great and Nearest Local Three, large construction local of the country. Represent over forty thousand members, women across California, about one hundred and one, a Hollister resident. Born and raised in the area, commute over three hundred and eighty, but now live in the, in the community of Hollister. When we talk about the community workforce agreement, we're not talking about others. We're talking about our own county members, community members, neighbors, our families. CW is more just a contract. It's commitment to our city. It ensures that projects are low worker who live, his family here, spend their picks. Keeps stellar related Hollister economy, supporting small businesses and string our hoods. It also creates opportunity for the next generations. Through ownership, young people in Hollister have pathway to a still career that provides livable wages, prevailing wage standard. They don't leave to find opportunities. Can build future right here while helping our city build their infrastructure. At the same time, the CBA protects taxpayers, requiring care being exiled contractors try to job, lowball offers, only to drive cost later with change orders. Get the most qualified, most reliable contractor delivering high quality work that lasts long and saves us more money on payers. Any contractor bid on, on the CWA, it's just to them withhold the contract to CDA. We welcome any contractor to be part of. This agreement is for worse, good for families, and for Hollister's fear. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arto. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is A Louis Rivera, to be followed by Jose, B Espina.
Good evening. I want to say thank you for this agreement you guys hold in Hollister. Got me member live here, that working here, that can some more quality with family. Thanks for that, for medical, pain, to show them there's a way to things. What they can keep on is wages, not have worry about wage death, have worry about coming accidents. So asking you guys to continue this agreement, just to get my, they providing more families to more free time and build recommend them.
Thank you, Ms. Vera. Speaker.
Next speaker is Jose, to be followed by Jason Hutton.
Thank you, Mayor Stevens. From the county, I'm picking on you. My name is Espino. I'm a business rep from Jose. The business represent for the present person, Priscilla Keverson, represent over nine hundred members that some of them do live here in Hollister. I'm asking to keep supporting the CA because we like some of our Mr. Travel, trying so far to go work and they keep taxes that they earn for DD. Thank you for support. Keep supporting.
Thank you, Jose. Thank you. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Jason Hutton, to be followed by Emmanuel Zindas.
Good evening, Mayor Stevens, the Council. I just want to say thank you. Thank for the agreement that benefits the city, the workers, the community contractors. My name is Jason. I was presented for local four metal workers. I get the privilege of presenting over twenty-five members here in the South Bay area. Thank you very much for the community work agreement. Helps create a better play field, helps prevent wage debt, and we can all agree that it's community. Free families that make this community just to stay in the community and here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hutton. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Emmanuel Zindas, to be followed by Bruno.
Okay, good evening, state councilmember. I'm a Low One Four member. I've been a Low One Four member for twenty-one years. I'm very proud to be a Low One Four member and took part on committing to my union. I become the executive board. I want to back to union and brothers and sisters. I also was a general manager for a law contractor, a account contractor. I see my brothers, sisters come early and sleep in the cars because from, and they can't work, enable them. And they're not able to be here. Also have a lot more members in here, but a team to the family. And they're going to wake up at the clock in the morning, drive, sleep in their car. I get, get to work with them there every day. Wanting the same answer I have, I will work real soon. That's what I want. That's here, represent my union brothers and sisters. Also, he had a really good presentation, a lot of bad characters out there. And I know you talking to me, you stand comparable. I understand that as union contractors, we provide skill and we provide lead good adults. He was talking about those were seen that wasn't seen where they upcharge, stack charge, bad act, it's more money. It was the union workers that provide detailed belts. It's more transparent. You won't, you won't get charged. You won't get bad acts. We do enjoy it. Thank you guys' time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Zindas. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Paul Bruno, to follow Jared Zindas.
Hi, Mr. Members of the Council. I'm Mr. Bruno. I'm the owner of Honor Ape Centering. Thank you for having me today. Order number one, two, or one, governors govern purchasing. And if you look where our section refer to operational efficiencies, end quote, and the end quote, to protect and maximize the pub funds. A particular agreement is in conflict with your own schedules. There's no input for the merit contractors in this would in place. There was no notion. Instead, the prior council adopted the unit set before, and it was restrictive. The community received no civic benefit from specialist provision. PLA is determined against nearly ninety percent of constrained workforce, though chose not to join the union. Let me repeat, ninety percent of the workforce chooses not to join any, and a particular agreement excludes them, working in city. Many of those people live here. You need to look further to the city of Watsonville, see that you're the place. They experience less competition, high costs, lack of competition, and projects able moved. Your own examples are your three large projects that have bid with PAs have only had one or two bidders. Your bidders be, um, big product, large of your PAs, only nine residents, that project and residents is clearly defined. Rest instead, national halls residents. They use a description of residents. Could be local. If you're hired at a low hiring hall, you live in perk, for you and consider local on the hire. So reconsider what that, I see you reconsider and consider recent appeal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bruno. Next speaker.
Our next speaker, Jared Zindas, to be followed by Jim.
I'm an apprentice with the one of four. Everything's hand-held oriented to have field qualified workers on city projects. When those contractors are sorted, the work is longer and the community benefits in the long run. CWA makes sure that people, when they're driven that rents like us aren't paying more later contract bears. Thank you for getting a agreement. That brings worker anarchy.
Thank you, Mr. Zindas.
Followed by Andy Visso.
Hello, I'm Mr. Jim Piaz. I represent myself and family and was in this Hollister. PLA is a public construction project, believed on time, on budget, and to the highest safety standards. They send clear terms for whiz training and work ethic in front. Plays reduce cost delays, encourage inconsistent practices of contractors. Important pay is recognized, local hiring, as we've from before. Sure that taxpayers are invested in these, just our own community creating low good paying, low rents, and ships and freeing workers opportunity for small minority businesses. In the PLA standard of safety practices, sure everywhere work, the job where from a law firm or subcontractor is portrayed and printed. Translates to fewer acts, lower availability, better quality output, see along keeping, ultimately, PAs of accounting and adding, it keeps a pressure built efficiently, workers create fair. You're seeing a turn and invest to residence. By adopting PAs, the council strengthens our low workforce, deliver reliable infrastructure, and probably moving forward smoothly. Thank you for your time and considerations.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Our next speaker, Anthony, to be followed by Eric Chen.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmember, my name is Anthony Queso. I'm business agent for Little City and Heat and Frontiers. Oh, our union recently went strike. It's not something that we delight in, and that's something happens very often. In fact, last round was thirty years ago. Every single P A project that was in place, all guys will work. Every one of them. And a lot of those players are half people that live in areas, older, and members from them. They want to work. And then the project kept getting there were no stop, the stop, slowdown. So it's really our benefit to keep, keep your residents working. I did want to ask, I did want to ask a question, but you know, I understand speakers longer up here. You know, we hear from non-union contractor, we talk about his, his employees not getting to work yet. I'll see, how many unions are here? Just for hands. Okay, I don't see any employee here. Ah, that is, maybe they don't here. Maybe they don't work. That's all I'll say.
Thank you, Mr. Zindas. The next speaker.
Our next speaker, Eric Kryn.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Yeah, maybe, maybe you're home. December three, this council, you know, negotiate, that, that council member.
Mr. Chris, we're having some issues with their audio.
Do you have it there? Where, Lou, connect to your phone.
Um, it's, it's my, I tried, um. Hold it back. I'm sorry.
Okay, you can all submit and comment. We'll share the count after getting a few.
I'll be back. Okay, sorry about that.
Mayor, since those are the public speakers aside of?
Okay, thank you. If he, if he comes on, I'll get him. Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're gonna close the content. I'm gonna check in with my fellow councilmembers. See if anybody wants to speak. Councilmember, send us one.
All right. So I want to introduce myself. I'm the president of the San Diego Office of Kitchenware Association, which is a member of Hollister Association. A lot of you know me as a council, but I'm also a union member. So I want to say thank you, everyone who came out here today, in particular, the people who live in Hollister, that time of day. I want to see more input. I'll be quite frank to you, right? I think it's pretty much this CWA was adopted by the previous C council. Here in the middle of a three contract, we're, I think, one point five years into the contract. So I'd like to see what the remainder of the contract looks like. I do have certain, I brought it before, I'm gonna say it again. Obviously, budget always considered for sitting up here, especially with the budget inherited from previous accounts. So please keep in mind moving forward. I know that is of your goal, but something is very, very important to me. Opportunity as well, would like to see if there's any other ways for to include low business owner, local workers that's not unionized. Just talking about remainder of contract and may can revisit later on. Somebody brought up the comment driving costs. That's all to consider for us. I know that likes the, I've heard non-unionized, like, uh, urban people will drive costs. We have come across that problem here before. So please, let's get eye on that. Again, this was something was adopted, so I think that given the information and the presentation we got from staff, I would like to shout on track. See what the numbers are, and then revisit conversation about it in a half. Thank you guys again. And I'd like to see local workers, all of those sites as well, if possible, too.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any comment aside? Okay, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
So I brought, because as a public servant, we need big stewards of public funds, right? You do the right thing with, it's not money, right? It's the books money. And we're in a direction and listen public and need to do the right thing. Spike Lee said, right? I like benefits I'm hearing, military veteran, the start hats. I like hearing that. Save projects, no one wants to get on the job. No matter what, you're, what if it's off a ladder, you're gonna slip white one, get injured in school. Want to have some products that are completed on time and are budget. Air quality work on capital improvement projects is huge. What a cease thing. I know I brought it for some of the brand sidewalk, California twenty-seven on the side, they're all rashed. Act is like an inch of despair reaching the track, a little bit, inch, some of the wheel, those wheel in front, big wheels on the back. Get hemmed up on, and then around the corner, ready, you got some thirty-year-old slacks, and they look great. I don't know, written construction, but it's right on the nine ninety-one. Time completion objects bid, and settling disputes before they had would be great, but stop work, stopages before it happens in port two. So I see the benefits. I look at the, I agree with, also members says. The reasons I brought it up was I wanted more bids and I wanted to see some more headed bids on the project. I just don't know if the, if the, that is out quite looked at, mainly the bids slides. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Villa. And then over on, on budget, I'm not totally sure. We're right in the middle of it, and let's see, let's see what happens.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember, go ahead, please.
No, thank, thank you. One for contesting. No, you have a full busy. You know, I, I appreciate the comments. I think we don't have data to kind of compare, but what we do know is community workforce agreements. Are here to act, not only employees, but the, but the community, city, county, know historically throughout California that they work, they can. The quality work is there because of the extent of training that implies the provisions of each organization that they play, whether it's men or men or community needs support. We know that there's, if there are conflicts, that there's the infrastructure to address it, which includes work with template and all them. Think what does not inhibit anyone putting any content. What does prohibit is people being taken advantage of, like wage debt or trafficking, like we all in areas. Issues with safety standards, they're just there if there aren't protections. We're all providing immunity or enforcing. We believe that people should have medical benefits, dependents. And those are values I think we said have, that I would protect, that people should have. The ability to provide their family with the air which we protected, provide medical care, and have opportunity to one day, one day retire with the need erect. So I completely support. I want to thank everybody for coming and sharing your variance. And we definitely do need data because we know they, we just want us to work in Hollister. So and for us to really determine that, we really need to complete and have a little bit more information of checks.
Thank you, Councilmember Russ. Okay. Go ahead, Councilor Deonda.
Thank you for coming out. Just comment, I still to go visit training facility. I forward to it. So I will be in that soon. I'm gonna check out y'all too.
I did those two, and it was very impressive, I have to say. Impressed. Okay, so thank you all. And I just want to echo what our local council said, you all for being here. And I, I appreciate all the comments, all verse comments. We will obviously be coming back latest year. We have a year and a half left just for your continued work, commitment, and to looking at projects. So thank you for coming here. We will be back with more information early about your rehearsal. We can deliver the agreement for the next six. So thank you all again for being here and working. Go ahead and go to the side. Okay, so to move on to the next item, I agenda, eight point two, this resolution assessing a sensitive remission and a job in the proposed law. So can we start reporting?
Yes, Stevens. City Clerk for Wood. This is follow-on decision that given by the city council on May nineteenth of their meeting to form a business advisory council. This, the laws are included with the resolution and though includes the requirements that the city council discussed at May nineteenth meeting, including the BAC or business advisory commission made of five members. All of them must be owned of a brick mortar business in the city with at least one member recommended business owned in downtown area. That the AC will make a motion to city council to enhance the capability of Hollister businesses to succeed. And will also help enhance education and opportunities for improve the economic viability of this climate businesses in the city. So that's what the item is. So bring back, if you have any recommendations, any changes to the files we kick though, otherwise, go ahead, adopt them.
Okay, thank you for that report. Any questions or comments from the side of the table? Any of this side?
I just quit. Question. I read all the documentation. I usually read the documentation more on time or about everything. When it comes to breaking to town area, does it have to be a goods-based business or can it be goods and services? Meaning like, could they sell insurance or can sell legal services? Like bricks or, but I, I understand to me have a physical solution now.
Yes, Vice Mayor Jay, my collection in the council discussion is that it didn't have to retail this that you mentioned, but it could service, but that they would have an actual physical location that anyone visits. So that's my reaction.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay, let me reserve until after the call. So can have any speakers on?
We have no comments to item.
Okay. Oh, you have one. Okay.
Go ahead. Do you want to put it in minutes or do you want to?
Okay, move right now.
I just want to thank Councilman Mayor, councilmembers for even considering this. And I really believe in opportunity to see economic development thrive, you know, better, you know, as users policy makers understand. This on themselves policy makers, right? We have policy on business. We understand process, protocol. A lot of the times, many of us don't understand the, the, the legal and, and I just process at the level. And this, I think, the two means can eat. And I know you've had issues trying to stop and understanding and these different firewall, different things that are maybe for their protection, none of those they don't understand. Create this negative sentiment. I do this as an opportunity actually means that, to actually draw positive focus, the business themselves are helping in for your discussion. And at the same time, you guys consider policies, then at point start to create, I think, a unified business and local government community. So we really start to see our community thrive. So really put you guys best forward.
Thank you, Mr. Deonda. Appreciate your comments. Okay, so let's look at public comment section. So the only, the only thing that I will just, on that, obviously, I am also a bit this, think this is a great idea. I want to make sure that it's very clear, that we're discussing the role of this commission. And I was wondering, I know that one issue to need to develop this commission, it is something that is very new for our community. And other communities for that are because I know we spoke this, some of us have reached on this award, we'll find others that were specific business missions. So this really new. So it'd be new for us. I'm glad that's possible. However, I wonder if there's a way for us to show a better clarity around the role. And I'm, I'm thinking more in the, in the section around the duties. I'm keen, our senator, any thoughts on how we be able to make that that's a bit more clear or could?
Sure. If you wanted to make more clear tied up, your main reclamation to the city council on a matter that will enhance. Excuse me, perhaps we could put something to, you know, matter with these jurisdictions. We can't influence just rights for borrowing, can we? You know, there's a lot of things that we don't have jurisdiction over.
Right.
Impact businesses significantly.
Okay.
And, and maybe simulation of policies, and then the stuff work on the siege themselves.
Okay, good with that. So I mean, then what means is basically clearly, thanks to example, we can change that is within the creation for the council. I appreciate that. Yeah. Okay, like that. So I want to include that in whatever. Okay, like that, so I want to include that in whatever change draft that we, go ahead, Councilor Maris.
Yeah, that that's very much with so thank you for that, Stevens, I certainly support as well. Uh, the other thing I want to keep in is that our, we are have actual trends, that business owner at a very are very creative and and that forefront, so keep that in mind, uh, Sujah, you're staffing.
Yes, and partnered with HD, so I have over, um, FDA assisting is part of their, uh, I mean with us, they've offered help.
So let's for, you know, like grant opportunities minus the grant, you know, other thing we can do, look at the side of the box to help save this money. Uh, we do, and I think that's sure there are, um, somebody that invest, we've got to prove back to prove it, to put as, thank you so much.
Okay, okay, and then, um, and so we can just kind of let the pub know what to expect and I don't know if this, uh, city manager, city clerk question, but the timeline, what, what can expect now that we have strapped, we have some like, like teeny weeks, the language.
So typically we was, we put the application, we would base it on, um, the application we for all of our boards mission and we would invite the city council to shout, um, that clearly that we was the city council bring forward the applicant. If not, we can also do a recruitment effort for, um, bring together affairs, things like that, so to face business in the city and it would come to the city council to those appointments. Um, it's a quarter, the meetings though that we, the council basically had done for our commission next meeting would likely be in, oh, sorry, October, so just kind of keeping up that.
Oh, okay, okay, thanks for that. Okay, so, um, any, um, any other questions, any thoughts, comment from Vice Mayor.
I just am a big fan of the idea because, um, you know, there's a lot of work city staff does, uh, where we do, I say pretty good on work, going with these adjets and getting things down and figuring out what to do. How to represent this for the whole town, that matter, it's good to have boots on ground, some, some eyes on the street and for direct from business owner, like what, what feeling, thinking of what would prove, um,ness for them, so I think it'd be really helpful to have. Um, addition from coming, uh, helps some, some fresh ideas to out of them things.
Okay, great to that minute, um, so, and say, do you have.
Uh, November, not October.
Okay.
So I was doing this in my head, so I will that up to article three section, it should be, uh, November.
Okay, okay.
And we're just, if we once get member of it's, then that can always all special numbers. It's just a law, uh, determine the regular meeting schedule and if, you know, if everybody see, you know, we got two months ago, then we'll just call special, get how November just get rolling.
Okay, great, great, right, okay, so then with, I'm now, uh, ask for.
To the mayor's stance.
That with the recommended.
Yes.
Um, go ahead, one second, okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so let's pass, thank you for that, just want to like, uh, and keep Mr. Hernandez, you're put into really, really thoughtful, um, not today through the process, thank for that. And then I'm gonna encourage my fellow councilmen as soon as possible.
I will send you the application as soon as possible, can share it with your.
Okay, thank, thank you. Okay, so let's move on to this, um, um, so the tweet twenty four twenty through twenty twenty five C, I'm sorry, civil grand jury consolidation report response, um, can we get a step for it?
Yes, you may, so, um, what you have before me this mean are, uh, two responses, the civil grand jury, uh, rest their consolidated report for twenty four twenty five, where they get various in all the local municipalities. For our, they look, uh, contract administration and, uh, the listener and shelter, and so what we've done, we have draft sponsors for consideration this evening. Each one shows finding recommendation and the response with your approval and what we do is, uh, mayor would sign, I would counter sign, then we submit them to proceeding judge, uh, and, and with that, we, uh, that process is done and here the start process again, we'll actually submit now.
Okay, thank you, um, any question, comment from the.
Yeah, uh, I have a request, I think for the quick demonstration piece, if we have a list of contracts, a list of contracts during budget, as we're going that piece, that it's rooted and to get that twiceer, um, during your mid budget and in the, just so that we, um, just aware. Be anything, but, um, at the responses, that they're very apparent, thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that, member, if I should.
I'm just, uh, curious as to like where these, um, the, the report findings where they originate from, like, you know, contract administration, Hollister, Malshir, these complaint driven, or do they come to the community? It can be just a little bit more about just.
So it can be complaint driven, maybe some just the grandaries just in looking at, uh, so on time wrenchers will attend various council meetings or board supervisor meeting, there's some peaks that are true, you're gonna see a lot more because you have, you've made three season county, so you'll see. Report on city of Hollister quite frequently, um, as grandaries, but can be a number of things to get a ton.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay, any questions or comments, oh, I'm not, so can move to the public comment, any other final questions, comments?
I got a quick comment.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
I just mirror what staff has said, our civil halls to response to the civil grand jury report. Civil jury, they are put a lot of time and effort diligence of the report and I certainly appreciate them doing that. Um, you know, most thing that human hands have aid was a human component, he improve on, right, nothing's fixed. Um, and then I do city services like planning, building and, uh, animal control, training IBS train horizon and training that's important, improve administrative services important, it's parents is important. And it will come to the city and county and, uh, work together, uh, make sure everyone treats their fair, but also, uh, and administration of service and cooperation between Hollister city and Mito County will continue to improve. I'm confident in that, I just want to thank civil grand jury for the report, your job was fun, sounds really good.
Okay, thank you, Smare, okay, so, um, are we getting action on this, we just would, um, proving the responses?
You need to push and prove the.
Okay, can I get a.
Two.
Second.
Okay, and okay, thank you for that, so we'll move on, um, next item, discussion potential in order for the Hollister, so we get a support.
So this is a follow up based on council press direction, uh, there in, uh, rest previously for staff to look to lobby ordinance that adopted by the Mito Board of Supervise. Based on direction at eight seventh, um, city attorney's office ordinance, East County ordinance with additional which led to lobby den of themselves and their clients are drawing any related of the city have any city officials, um, this is actually that the city council gave. One thing that I do want to note in the ordinance, um, the definite of lobby, there is addition of contralabs, the one clued in the draft ordinance is one San Diego County, um, included, however, I did want to pour it up because that that means the city council is about FEC regulations. And whereas county says that contract lobbyist is one who receive or has entered into agreement or compensation of one thousand dollars more for any services that include engaging lobbying activity during any consecutive three paid. The FPC defines that lobbyist ad, individual receives thousand dollars an hour a month, so I just wanted to note that, just so you're aware, um, you did about the FEC definitions of a lot, so. Draft notices before you to be able to provide feedback on and if the council is okay with it, we will bring back for applying an induction editor count date, you.
Okay, thank you, Robert, um, questions, comments, good councilor.
So I'm not gonna say we can go with what count, we can make restrictive, not restrictive.
You can, it's your ordinance, so you go how you'd like, I was reporting on that FEC.
I appreciate that, just think, yeah, for sake of consistency, across the bodies, I would keep it at what the count has and, uh, threshold thousand, too.
Okay, any other questions, comments? I agree with that too, especially if you are contracting, your, the income levels ebb and flow, and there are times you're gonna very little and others will make a lot more, so I think, uh, for to see that's a good idea, I also that it reflects that are kind of that on time consults and contractors, so like that's.
Just a quick, anytime you can pre sound a bit in transparency, I think it's good for, um, I don't know, public exception, right, which is public office, right, so, um, it's a great effort for, I'm just ensuring that people lobbying, they want to see your decisions, um, that you know who's doing why.
Thank you. Okay, go to public.
No public comments on them.
Okay, so public comments, so, um, okay, so thank you, um.
Motion needed, it's just duration, certain changes the council wants, if not, bring it back in this forum introduction.
I'm not hearing any changes, think was gonna.
Get back to you.
Okay, great, thank you, sir, I appreciate it. Okay, so, um, looks where at? The, um, final part, I mean, so, uh, let me check in with our, our counselors, uh, counselor, send ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens, committee members, but I report on formation, I think it's appropriate to do it. On Thursday, the seventh, uh, the San Diego funding had a distrib and reached out to vitamin there, the line was all the way down this boulevard from, from, uh, clinic. Um, we're very well organized, very cautious, you know, professional, not resident also to myself, uh, so it was, we also saw her be out as well, um, into direct traffic and what. Um, took the opportunity to give out cards and talk people, I only paid for it because it's after work and I had to be right after, I just put that out, thank publicly for it, too.
Great, thank you, that report, Councilor, yeah, any, anything to, okay, this side, uh, Smare.
Uh, yeah, so last Wednesday, August thirteenth, I had the chair of the one of the Association of Honorary Big Governments meeting and it was about, uh, public inspiration for, um, uh, some effective group that, you know, stroll within the whole range, county, San Cruz, Kansas, Mito County, um, it's really like F inch thick, ours only like thirty five inches, but I've been able to in our time. Uh, absorb this information and then it seemed that's super, uh, dense, but, uh, M bag coordinated, it has a created plan consists of these following elements, honorary, Mito, Santa County. They had inventory existing transportation related services, they have, uh, assessment of the transportation need for youth, seniors, persons of disabilities, persons of limited means, veterans, students and limiting proficiency community members. So these have groups, strategies and activities and projects to address the gap between current transportation services and the needs and commend prioritization of these strategies and activities or projects. Um, if you dive into it, um, report a little bit more in the beginning.
Okay, great, thanks for the report, Councilor Morales.
Yes, um, we will have, um, senior meeting at this Wednesday, we'll look forward to come back with the report and, um, I'll schedule receipt and we'll report back to.
Okay, great, we're looking for two, and second step, you know, seniors, that was really important one, yeah, that's right, new one for you, thanks for that, appreciate it. And then I do have a couple two rounds, so I, uh, participated lab pool, um, this week and, um, uh, we had really good discussions about just their having, like, a land use report that had the, uh, public, uh, community bur. Bacon doesn't open there, so any for the communities interested in participating as a new representative for the co, um, you get an application and, um, we'll be, uh, you know, at our next month's meeting in September. Um, so guess in, we, that we, a lot of applicants have a lot of people to choose from, and also a conference level, um, lab group, um, related, there. Jordan from Motina and myself to go to the Cal Lab conference in, uh, Seattle in October, so I will go in that, which be really, uh, learning experience, looking forward to that and I go. So I'll be able to come back and get an information about what I learned, like the best sleep, the number of lap guys could be really inching. So, um, Mayor Jordan, I, uh, as I select to represent, to read in the regional Alaco, uh, group, I believe make relief, Mayor Jordan will be our representative and I will hear all that, so, uh, lots also not really for me. That experience, looking forward to it, so a lot going on, um, we'll have some more information the next round, messes and other things, I will bring you that back, a lot just some business that we attend to at the meeting. And then just, um, let her know as well that I, uh, I and, um, Samantha Dave, we met with our Chrisman, the law, I mean, meeting that a lot of information about happening in Washington, especially the thing, uh, that impact our community and fortunately, news is not great. Um, most of the things we're interested in, we're speaking to representative Lauren is, um, the rest for support for some, um, financial support and grants from the federal government around projects, as our water, uh, airport, uh, roads. Our infrastructure in general and look like a lot of those projects are, uh, kind of on hold because a lot of uncertainty around funding coming to federal command, so we will keep on that, uh, some support from our representative of how we move forward and, um, of the ways to. Get some resources in a way for those similar type of, so, um, I thank for being here at that meeting and we will see how we can, um, find out of work grounds or the right, the right ways to, uh, tap to some resources that are, uh, we, we believe still available, local communities. That's very opening and, uh, just as an AI, um, Congressman, uh, love, uh, very supportive of San Diego County and city Hollister and is like, um, welcome to whatever support she got her. Okay, so that's all I have to pour, um, so we will move on, um, to, um, to city manager reports.
Just so the comments you made about our meeting when Chris won, I've been very informative, very predictive and appreciate the opportunity to join with you.
Yeah, yeah, great, thank you, okay, so I think then, so move into seven, so we're gonna take, take a minute, big for soul, and then walk the chairs and, and move into seven. Oh, I'm sorry, you have read that session.
Go ahead.
And we will.